All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting of the Sentencing Guidelines Commission to order. My name is Kelly Lynn Mitchell, and I'm the Chair of the Commission. It's now just a few minutes after 1:00, and the July 20 public hearing is called to order. I have a few announcements to make to sort of get through how this process will go, and then we'll start hearing testimony from individuals. So the hearing is taking place in the Minnesota State Capitol Building, Room G3 at 75 Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard in St. Paul, Minnesota. I'm here along with Commissioners Larkin and Middlebrook, and Executive Director Nate Wrights, and Jill Payne from our staff. And we have other Commission members who are also joining us online. The public hearing has a remote access option by telephone or interactive technology. And instructions for remote participation have been posted on our website As I mentioned, Commissioner Marath, Commissioner Schnell, Commissioner Lad are attending the meeting remotely with us today as well. All right, so the purpose of the hearing is to consider proposed modifications related to crimes created or amended by the legislature during the 2023 regular legislative session. There's two packets. We have modifications described in Section A. Sorry, it's two sections of the packet. The modifications that are described in Section A and shown in Appendix 1 of the public hearing notice will take effect on August 1, 2023. And the modifications that are described in Section B, which are shown in Appendix 2 of the public hearing notice, will take effect August 1, 2025. You can access a complete copy of the proposed modifications on our website at mn.gov/sentencing-guidelines-meetings. These have been available on the website since June 20, 2023, the same day the notice of this hearing was published in the State Register. There are a limited number of public inspection copies available in this room together with website access information. Okay, so if you wish, you can make oral or written testimony today regarding the proposed modifications. You may also address questions about the proposed modifications for the Commission, its staff, or witnesses. And if you make an oral statement, the Commission or its staff may ask questions of you. Members of the public who registered or testified before today will be called first in the order that they registered. If you would like to testify about the proposed modifications today, and you have not yet registered, you must first register your name, address, telephone number, and the name of any individuals or associations that you represent in connection with the hearing. If you are here in person, please sign in with the staff by the signs reading "Sign in to testify." If you are attending remotely, please email your registration information to staff@sentencing guidelines@state.mn.us. You will then receive the meeting access information. If you have trouble, you may call staff at 651-296-0144. So what I just went through, that was really if you haven't already signed up to testify, for the most part. After everyone has testified, the public hearing will end. The Commission will hold the record open five calendar days after the public hearing to accept a written comment. Written materials must be received no later than July 25, 2023. Any person who wishes to provide a written statement may do so in one of three ways: by delivering the written statement to the public hearing today; by sending the written statement by U.S. mail to Minnesota Sentencing Guidelines Commission at 658 Cedar Street, Suite GE58, St. Paul, Minnesota, 55155; or by emailing the written statement to sentencing guidelines@state.mn.us. The Commission will give -- and all of everything I just said is also on our website, so you can go to our website, click on Meetings, all of that information is right there. So if you did not already submit a statement and you wish to do so, everything I just said about how to do that is listed on our website. The Commission will give due consideration to all written comments received within the five-day comment period, as well as all written comments received up until now. The Commission will meet next Thursday, July 27, at 1:00 p.m. to finally adopt or reject its proposals. That meeting will take place in the afternoon room at the Department of Corrections at 1450 Energy Park Drive in St. Paul, with remote participation optional. All right, so we had six people register in advance to testify. I think I know that we're waiting on one Commission member to arrive, but we are -- we also have people waiting. So I think we're going to go ahead and commence the testimony. So I'm going to ask staff to go ahead and call the first testifier. All right, so Mr. Zimmer, if you would just identify yourself for the record. Welcome to the Commission, and go ahead with your testimony.
Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Mitchell and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Sentencing Guidelines Commission as it seeks public comment on proposed modifications to the sentencing guidelines. I am David Zimmer, and I currently serve as the Public Safety Policy Fellow with Center of the American Experiment. I'm also a retired peace officer, having served 33 years in local law enforcement. I appear before you today regarding your deliberations on applying a proper severity level to the new crime of carjacking. Our legislature appeared to address one of the most vexing public safety issues of our time, that being carjacking. However, unless this body takes action to apply enhanced severity levels to the crime above those applied to traditional robbery, the creation of this new law is nothing more than window dressing. In 2023, window dressing is not what Minnesotans are demanding and not what Minnesotans need. Carjacking is one of the most heinous crimes impacting Minnesotans in 2023. Just a few years ago, such a crime was almost unheard of. But that began to change in 2019, when the act of carjacking exploded in the Twin Cities. According to the Star Tribune, carjacking increased over 500% between 2019 and 2020. And in 2021, over 750 violent carjackings occurred in our state. And in Minneapolis alone, nearly two people per day were carjacked. We have all heard the accounts of people accosted as they have pulled up to their homes or driven into their garages, many in broad daylight and many in neighborhoods where this type of violence had here before been nonexistent. We have also heard of too many stories of innocent motorists being injured or killed by carjackers intent on invading the police by fleeing at high rates of speed. Tragically, along with this increase in carjacking crimes, there's been a notable increase in carjackings occurring with young children buckled into car seats or family pets in the backseats of cars. These incidents understandably cause significant trauma to the victims and arguably far more severe trauma than in a traditional robbery of cash or other goods. It's a trauma that has been devastating to the well-being of Minnesotans. Like many of our public safety systems, our state court system has been slow to respond to this problem. Sadly, in 2021, our state courts departed downward over 55% of the time from the durational sentencing guidelines for robbery. Minnesota courts also departed downward from the dispositional sentencing guidelines, overall 45% of the time, which represented a fourth consecutive annual high for these downward departures. Carjacking has become such an issue in Minnesota that the U.S. Attorney recognized the need to step in and send a message. Since May of 2022, the U.S. Attorney's Office has done just that by committing to prosecute and sentence adult carjackers federally, where the penalties are more severe and certain than in state court. The strong response is having a positive effect on the street with a notable reduction in carjackings since last summer. But this progress offers our state a roadmap, not an opportunity to walk away from the issue. I submit to you that applying the existing robbery severity levels to this new carjacking statute is the equivalent of walking away. During its June 2023 meeting, this Commission met and discussed which severity level to apply towards carjacking. In a disappointing development, most of the Commissioners failed to recognize the importance of enhancing carjacking above the standard existing robbery sentence. Instead, the majority voted to rank the new carjacking offense exactly like the existing robbery offense, making it nothing more than an elaborate tracking system. This Commission appears set to ratify that decision next week. Ratification would fail to acknowledge or address the unique dangers and trauma presented by carjacking. Ratification would represent the status quo and an inaction far too many Minnesotans have come to expect from our criminal justice system. Join U.S. Attorney Luger and Minnesotans across the state who want to send a message to those so inclined to commit carjacking. I urge this body to adopt enhanced severity levels for carjacking commensurate with the level of terror and trauma that carjackings have come to represent to an unfortunate growing number of Minnesotans. Thank you. No, I do acknowledge that the departure rate just is for all robberies. And you're right, this will help track and provide data for what carjacking is. My argument would be, that's not what the state wants. That's not what the people want. This has been a dramatic and traumatic crime that has befallen Minnesotans, and they expect more out of our criminal justice system than just creating a system that we can more accurately track the crime.
Good afternoon, Mr. Zimmer. So what we typically do, we're not an elected body, we're an appointed body, so we kind of take our cue from the legislature, who was representative and is listening intently to the public and responding to their concerns. And the legislature, though, gave the maximum penalties the same as robbery. So what's -- I mean, you went into a lot of arguments why carjacking is different from robbery. But we kind of take our cues from the legislature. They said the maximum penalties are the same as robbery. And so now we're trying to figure out where to rank it.
Right. Again, I would acknowledge that, yes, that's the official message that you received from the legislature. As you know, the legislature passed all of the controversial bills, basically by one vote in the Senate. It was -- this is not an overwhelming mandate coming from the people through their representatives. It was a kind of a hairline vote on all controversial issues. I would count this in that. And I would say that if you looked into the record, there would be certainly a lot of comments from the minority members of the legislature that wished for carjacking to be treated more severely than robbery. I believe there are members of the legislature slotted to speak today, and I think they will speak to that point.
Commissioner Schnell has a question.
Thank you, Madam Trigg. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right, excellent. I think in addition to the question raised by Commissioner Knutson relative to the maximum penalty as established, I just wanted to kind of address, because I'm 100% in agreement that this is a traumatic offense, that in fact, any robbery is a traumatic experience for the person who goes through that. One of the things that I'm -- that as I think about this using -- you know, I know you have that law enforcement background at Lance as well. And my dear, I think about the elements of the crime, the elements of what's required here in robbery, generally speaking, some force, a weapon, threat. And I -- part of the thinking for me was trying to weigh -- and again, this is based upon the elements of the crime and what's necessary to commit that crime at this level. And as you know, robbery is a commit, is a presumptive commit. aggravated robbery is a presumptive commit. And so, you know, I think about this from the standpoint of that experience. Somebody points a gun at you and demands that you turn over your purse, your wallet, your computer, whatever it may be. Or they point a gun at you and take your car. Again, value may be the same. We don't know what's in that purse and those sorts of things. I'm trying to weigh that as well as the kind of the indication of the stat max side of this. Can you respond to that from the standpoint of the differentiation of, for instance, aggravated robbery of a car versus aggravated robbery of somebody at gunpoint with a -- you know, who had an equivalent amount of dollars, money with them as maybe perhaps the value of a car? How do we differentiate that?
I think the important thing to note is that in virtually every carjacking, there is an element of a physical altercation by either grabbing or forcing a person out at gunpoint. And I guess I would just say that if any other form of robbery, purse snatching or robberies of a convenience store, for whatever reason, exploded at 500%, I think it's reasonable that our criminal justice system respond to that in some way. So that's my argument, is you have before you a crime that has exploded onto the scene here in Minnesota, and we need to deal with it more effectively than the status quo.
Madam Chair, one more question.
Commissioner Schnell.
Is the concern, the fact that you believe that the response of having a longer term, for instance, a presumptive commit aggravated robbery or carjacking, is critically necessary as a response, a system response to that increase? That in itself, one is, would I minimize or reduce that number? Is that part of the thinking?
Yes. I think the example I laid out with the U.S. Attorney taking a step last summer of very vocally announcing what the intention was of the U.S. Attorney's Office to combat this crime, the word gets out on the street that, hey, the feds now are going to prosecute you if you do this crime. That type of action by law enforcement officials is a great deterrent. Right now, for the last several years, for whatever reason, carjacking and I know it's not the same crime, but car theft has become a sport to many, and unfortunately, many juveniles in our state. And the message needs to be sent, not just from the U.S. Attorney, but from our state, that we're going to clamp down on that and we're going to address it. When the word gets out that, well, no, actually, the state's just going to try to quantify it. We created a law, but we're not really going to do anything differently. We're just going to categorize it differently. That sport mentality will stay.
Point of clarification, just, you know, is the concern then? So if we're talking about an aggravated robbery, which is a presumptive commit, you know, whether somebody, you know, uses force on somebody to commit that robbery and aggravate, that would be an aggravated robbery of somebody's wallet, purse, whatever it was, that demanded they assaulted somebody in the course of taking that. It constitutes an aggravated robbery. Is the concern that it's -- that needs to be more prison time? Or is it the concern, one of the things you noted was that you were concerned about the high rates of departure? Is that -- if we didn't have high rates of departure, would that address your concern?
Well, I think they're both a concern. And I just think a message needs to be sent, different than, hey, we've created a law to address this, but there's really no different penalty than what currently exists. That message is not compelling to the criminal element to persuade them not to get involved in a carjacking.
Commissioner Larkin?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zimmer. In making your comments today, did you consider the collateral consequences of carjacking to the victim? I mean, so oftentimes, we hear, well, there was a high-speed chase. There was a crash. Somebody was hit by the vehicle. And then we next hear, and it was a stolen vehicle. It was taken in a carjacking. And then, you know, someone takes my purse at gunpoint. That's horrifying, but I just immediately cancel my credit card to get a new driver's license. If someone takes my car, I no longer have a way to get to work. I no longer have a way to get my child to daycare. Did you consider those sorts of things as well?
I did, and I made comment in the written document here. The collateral damage that we're all seeing and we read about frequently now is, you know, unfortunately, a child in a car seat in the back of a car. Can you imagine the trauma? When you get your car stolen and your toddler is in the back of the car? Or even your pet, your lab or your cat or something? We've heard stories of those thrown out on highways and such as the cars carjacked. And you brought up a great point. Just in the last week, there have been two fatal car accidents now. I can't say they were carjackings. I believe they were both stolen vehicles. But the result is the same. It's, again, this sport mentality by some in our community to either carjack or steal a car and then do whatever you want, flee the police, drive through red lights and T-bone innocent people. It's happening with far too regularity. And I would just argue that our state needs to do something above and beyond the status quo for this particular crime. And to the argument of, well, the legislature didn't, you know, provide us any specific direction to enhance this penalty, what's the purpose of this Commission if not to consider things like that? The legislature could just do it all. That there is a purpose for this Commission to deliberate and seek. You know, I greatly appreciate that you seek public comment on this. And I think you're going to hear a lot from the public today that they expect more than the status quo.
So thank you so much for your testimony. I just want to clarify two things. One is, I didn't have my microphone on when I asked my question of you. But just for the record, I'm just going to say it again that I had asked you about the departure information that you looked at and what your thoughts were, given that we weren't able to really tease out which ones of those items were carjackings and which ones weren't, because that wasn't in the current legislation. The other point I would just make is, I think in your last comment, you actually just hit the nail on the head about what we're grappling with here, which is teasing out the different actions, which often result in multiple offenses. So you gave the example of the child being in the backseat when the vehicle is carjacked. Well, that's also kidnapping. So that person has two charges that they're facing, not just the one. And there's a penalty for each one of those actions. And so we are really trying to tease out what actions carjacking represents, how that, how serious that is in relation to other ways that you might be able to commit aggravated robbery. In this case, first degree, it's always with force. It's always, you know, a force or weapon, that sort of thing. So that's similar. So that's what we're grappling with, and that's really what this conversation is about. And I appreciate you adding to that conversation today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we can take the next testifier, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also had my microphone off, so I will restate that we called Susan B. Crum. She was not present. We called David Zimmer. He testified. Our third testifier in person is Michelle Garnett-Mackenzie.
So as you approach the table there, I'll say, welcome to the Commission. Thank you for coming today. Please state your name for the record, and then go ahead.
Thank you. And am I in the right chair? Okay. Thank you. My name is Michelle Garnett-Mackenzie. I am a Deputy Director at the Advocates for Human Rights. And thank you for letting us make a last-minute substitution here for my Executive Director, Robin Phillips. The Advocates for Human Rights worked very closely with the Minnesota Legislature and others to restructure Minnesota's labor trafficking statute. 609-282 was, as the Commission in very thorough discussions noted, previously was a very tangled statute that described many, many different kinds of conduct. And now we have restructured it into something with the five different components that you've been considering and really think that this has brought it into a more workable tool for ensuring justice for victims of trafficking. Our research, our general protocol development, our training and work with victims, we represent noncitizen victims of labor trafficking and other crimes in Minnesota as they try to navigate our immigration system over the last decade have really highlighted the limitations of an unranked offense. And we are very, very glad that the Commission has taken the decision to recommend ranking of the newly defined crimes. Labor trafficking at its essence is, though, a criminal business practice that really involves many levels of industry by which the perpetrators financially benefit. that really involves many levels of industry, uh, that, by which the perpetrators financially benefit. That's the point of labor trafficking, is to not pay people for the work they are doing, to financially benefit from the exploitation of others and which is intentionally fissured to avoid responsibility by those who benefit the most, uh, from those decisions that result in harm to people. And criminal responsibility needs to be shared by those at all levels who are benefiting from the crime. If we're going to stop treating, uh, labor trafficking as a, a good cost saver and, and smart business practice in reducing payroll costs, uh, which is unfortunately often what the, the consideration is. The current statute, 609-282, does not get at some of that higher level of responsibility. It really, uh, does place responsibility, uh, most on those who will be, uh, lower-level operatives, who will be doing, working directly with the workers, um, often, um, in more direct control. And, and for that reason, even though we are deeply supportive of the changes and of the decision to rank and of allowing judges to impose penalties beyond very low, you know, uh, months of, in jail for severe offenses, we do caution against escalating up, uh, the penalties beyond what's, uh, the initial staff recommendations were. Our human rights principles certainly require states to impose consequences that are proportionate to the crimes. That's what you are wrestling with in all your decisions. And to avoid disparate impact on marginalized communities that historically have been the target of these lower-level investigations. The Commission discussed labor trafficking at great length. I understand you spent, uh, more time on labor trafficking over your past two meetings than anything else. And that's, that is really important because it is a new, uh, a new area for us to explore and hold people accountable in the criminal system. And, and we want to ensure that you consider the conduct that we were envisioning in 609-282, subdivision one and one A three, the death and grievous or great bodily harm, um, when considering the rankings. Now, certainly, labor traffickers can commit assault against their, uh, the people they are trafficking. And prosecutors can and should charge assault in that case. And I think that was one of the, the questions that the Commission wrestled with is, why is labor trafficking with, uh, great bodily harm less than assault with great bodily harm? Assault is assault and it can be charged as that. The 609-282 attempts to ensure accountability for death or for great bodily harm, where the conduct wouldn't support a charge of assault or of murder. Certainly, the statute is defined, um, to exclude labor trafficking resulting in death, to exclude, uh, cases where murder in the first or second degree is committed. So the statute reads, labor trafficking resulting in death only occurs when murder in the first or second degree is not committed thereby. So we understood there might be doubt that might seem like it would be in those, those first categories, but was, should not be treated as such. An example of the conduct that we saw in labor trafficking, uh, cases can be found in really the only case successfully prosecuted under the statute so far against Ricardo Batres. Two of his, his victims were seriously injured while working, one fell off a roof, uh, and one had a wall collapse on him. Mr. Batres, uh, could, was not charged with assault. The prosecutor's office looked at what happened. He may not have even been on site when this happened, so an assault charge did not make sense. But nonetheless, he did create the conditions where the workers were, uh, working in unsafe conditions. They were kept from seeking medical attention after the injuries. He needed criminal accountability. The reality is that, um, Batres was the only one who would be criminally liable, uh, despite others in that development, uh, you know, who were letting those conditions also happen. And, uh, we don't know what pressure was on Mr. Batres either. As a result, um, we really do support the staff recommendation to start at the ranking of, of death at nine and instead of 10 and, and then move to griev- or great bodily harm at, at eight, um, back to where the, the staff recommendation started. This is consistent with the, uh, crimes like, uh, criminal abuse of a vulnerable adult result, resulting in great bodily harm, um, where the special vulnerability of the victim is taken into account, certainly, uh, by definition. In that case, uh, labor trafficking victims are held in different conditions than somebody just walking down the street and, and have less ability to remove themselves from the, the crime, um, or the conditions. It recognizes that, uh, labor trafficking, uh, with great bodily harm, is different and distinct from assault, the first-degree assault, and that assault can still be used, but captures conduct that doesn't, isn't described by assault. The only other thing that we would just put on the record is that we do support, um, having some of the offenses, not all of the offenses, on the serious violent offenses list. Uh, the, the level six and level seven offenses that you are recommending makes sense, um, to us, having worked with, directly with victims. Um, and as a human rights organization, uh, concerned about accountability, to also still keep off that serious crime list and not escalate. So with that, I would close. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions from Commission members? All right. Well, thank you. That was, I, the, I really actually appreciated the examples that you brought today. So I, I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to, to come and explain that perspective.
Of course. Thank you very much for your consideration of this. I hope you enjoyed your trip through labor trafficking and, uh, received, thank you.
Okay, we'll call the next witness or the next testifier, not witness, testifier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The final in-person testifier is Kelly Jansen.
So, welcome to the Commission. Please identify yourself for the record and then you can start when you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Kelly Jansen and I'm a concerned citizen. I've been, um, working to protect children in various roles throughout my lifetime and a lifelong Minnesota resident. And I've been monitoring your meetings for the last year and a half. And so I have two concerns about resources that have been cited and used, um, during your discussions. And I, you know, realize and very thankful that you all represent different areas of the criminal justice system. And so I just, um, you know, one thing I heard the Attorney General from, um, North Dakota say, actually today, was that sentencing and laws should reflect the value we place on the lives of law enforcement that put their lives at risk every day. And, um, so one of the things that I had heard was, um, a while back, one of the Commissioners had, um, used the report called Crime Survivor Speak Report as a justification for reducing sentencing. And, you know, and that report had, she had said that, it said that victims, um, didn't always want to have the highest sentence for the people that committed the crime against them. And I just found that really hard to believe that victims would really say that because anybody I've ever known that has been a victim of crime, the sentence has never been enough. And I understand having compassion for people, but, um, that's just the truth. And so that's what I thought about that. So I looked up, um, who funded that study? And found that the Tides Center had funded that study. And, um, yeah. Commissioner Koenigstein?
Uh, the what? Who, who funded it?
Oh, the Tides Center? Tides, T-I-D-E-S, Tides Center. And so then I looked a little further and the Tides Center, um, had given money to the Minnesota Freedom Fund, which bailed out people. And one of the people that they posted bail for was a man accused of sexually assaulting an eight-year-old girl in July of 2020. And the Massachusetts Bail Fund, which helped post bail for a woman accused of stuffing her newborn baby in a garbage can outside a Boston pizza shop in February 2021. So, um, that, it's very disturbing to me that that would be a resource that would be used in, um, setting our sentencing guidelines. And there's got to be better studies out there that are more neutral. And, um, one study that I have looked through was a Canadian study, um, survivor's survey. And, uh, by the Canadian Center for Child Protection. And they reported that, um, 70% of the people that participated said that the crimes against them had a lifelong impact on them. So, um, that's something to keep in mind, is the impact that the crimes have on the, the victims. And then, um, my second thing that I've heard, used quite a few times, is that the recidivism rate is only about 30%. And that I also find really hard to believe. And so, um, I read, um, a book called Criminal Injustice by Raphael Mangle. He's an attorney and a policy fellow at, in the Manhattan Institute. And he said that, that, um, the actual recidivism, recidivism rate is more like 70% because they use a longer, um, study, so it's more like 10 years versus the four years. That's the, um, the static 99 test that Minnesota uses, is a very flawed test because the, um, criminal has to go through at least 14 steps in order to qualify as being recidivized. So, um, that's really a big requirement or a big amount to, to qualify for that. Um, let me see. So I think that is about all that I had for today. So I just wanted to thank you for your time and for, um, taking public testimony.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, just, is there any, uh, questions? Oh, Commissioner Muraf has a question.
I just wanted to clarify, I was the one who had originally mentioned that study. Just wanted to make sure it was known that that was not something that the Commission as a whole endorsed or used whatsoever as a resource in making any kind of decisions. It was just something that I came across in my own independent studies, trying to just get a, a better idea of the picture around the victim of crimes and whatnot. And I'm sure, Ms. Jansen, as you probably are aware, it's tough to find credible, robust studies on that topic. So I'll be the first to acknowledge that, yes, there are flaws, there are biases and conflicts of interest, absolutely. And that should be taken into consideration.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Any other questions from the Commission? Questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Thank you so much for coming today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I believe now we're going to transition to, uh, remote participants and Nate is going to help us through that.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so that does conclude the in-person testimony. If there's anybody in the room that would like to testify in person, please, um, uh, sign up here to my left. Also, if there's anybody online who still wishes to speak, uh, our time is drawing to a close here soon. So please, um, please, uh, sign up using the information that's on our website. At this point, our next witness is Senator Warren Limer. Senator Limer, I'm going to make you a panelist in just a moment. So, let's see. Shoot, I, I saw his name and then I lost it.
He's up there.
Oh, you made him a panelist. Oh, excellent. Okay. All right. I'm going to unmute you then.
Can you, uh, hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Senator Limer.
Sounds like a cell phone commercial. Nevertheless, I want to thank you all for, uh, allowing me to speak. I'm State Senator Warren Limer. I am a member of the Senate Judiciary Committee and the ranking member in that committee. It, uh, has come to my intention today that you will be discussing the, uh, the, uh, issue of carjacking as a separate offense, uh, other than or considering the difference between robbery or common theft. And it may also include, uh, the discussion of criminal sanctions for violating such crime. Uh, as a legislator, I too have given much thought and had lengthy discussions with my Senate colleagues about this issue. I know the subject of carjacking is also heavy on the minds of our citizens. The thought of being threatened, assaulted and forcibly deprived of one's vehicle is foremost on the minds of many as they stand at a gas pump or walk across a parking lot or sometimes even in their own driveway. My colleagues have also heard stories as well. Carjacking is a serious crime, much more serious than just simple robbery or car theft. The threat of deadly force by an assailant in order to steal one's vehicle crosses the line from simple property crime and it makes it a personal crime. The threat alone can also involve others that may be in the ve- target vehicle, especially those who might be young children or infants. The crime invades one's personal space and invades or involves property that's generally be, being considered safe. The subsequent theft and travel of the stolen vehicle oftentimes triggers harrowing speeds, oftentimes through densely populated areas. I believe just this year alone, at least two individuals have been killed by car thieves who are racing through metropolitan areas at high rates of speed, subsequently losing control of their vehicles and crashing into others. I've also followed the statistics showing the reported carjackings were double the amount, rising from 2021 to 2022. The crime against our citizens evokes fear to both car owners and passengers as well as the public at large. This is a serious and violent crime with deadly consequences to perpetrator and citizen alike. For the following reasons, I recommend the act of carjacking be considered a felony-level crime. Carjacking is intentional. Stealing a car with deadly threat is so much more than simply taking someone's property without permission. Second, intentional carjacking evokes fear to a vehicle's occupant as well as the general public. It expands that, uh, threat to the general public. Often, carjacking turns stolen vehi- vehicles into weapons, especially if the car is used at high rates of speed, crowded circumstances, which, as I said before, causes a danger to our citizens. Since we are so dependent on individual automobile use, carjacking can take away one's ability to get to and from work. And it often affects low-income and middle-income families at disproportionate levels. I introduced legislation earlier this year, which I believe is worthy of your consideration. Pro- the proposal formally recognized the crime of carjacking. It's modeled after our current robbery statute with its three levels based on simple to aggravated charges. The proposal added five years incarceration to the maximum statutory penalty based on the level of threat, where the threat was either implied or it caused bodily harm, or in the third, uh, degree, it caused death of the victim. In my written testimony, I've attached a reference and a link, Senate File 2028. The proposal also imposes a mandatory minimum for each level of infraction, two years, four years, six years, depending on the level of severity. Despite the hope that carjacking and violent crime would subside, the limited date data received this year is inconclusive. We still have a long way to go to the end of the year. Accidents caused by those who perpetrate carjacking are a deadly threat to our citizens as well as themselves. It's a little different than simple robbery. Enhancing the pen- enhancing the penalty of carjacking as well as assuring swift prosecution of carjacking is necessary to stem the ever-increasing rate of this deadly threat to our people. And I'll stand for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Senator Limer. Are there any questions from members of the Commission? Senator Limer, I have a question for you. Um, earlier today, I don't know if you heard the test- Earlier today, I don't know if you heard the testimony of Mr. Zimmer, but I have a similar question for you that was asked of him. We are grappling with trying to tease out the behavior. And the carjacking statute that has been presented to us is very similar to aggravated robbery, which would which would be a situation where, you know, somebody might might be held up at gunpoint or their property may be taken by force. Both are very traumatic events. And we talked about that when we chose the ranking that we did. So I'm just wondering, from your perspective, you know, how would how would you have us differentiate between those behaviors in the way that we're looking at ranking this crime?
Thank you for the question. I did hear the testimony before. I heard your question before, and I did have a few moments to scribble down a few differences. It is true that the Carjacking Act is very similar to robbery. It involves an invasion of a person. It's the use of a deadly threat of that individual. However, unlike simple robbery, taking taking and escaping with a vehicle requires a degree of travel. And it's traveling oftentimes at a higher rate of speed. And I would imagine for the perpetrator, there might be a degree of panic in the attempt to escape the territory. And and by doing so, it causes an extra problem. It causes a compounding of danger to the public in that escape. You really can't have a carjacking without escaping the owner. And so that that is a compounding of the danger unlike simple robbery. Likewise, there's a consequence to the individual. As I mentioned before, dependency on a motor vehicle also causes a hardship to the victim, especially if you're in a low-income or a middle coming from a low-income or a middle-income economic strata. Trying to find a vehicle when it might be your only vehicle may compound that hardship on the victim. Unlike simple robbery where you're taking an object or perhaps money, that too can create a hardship. But nothing like taking a vehicle where an individual needs to have it to go to work, to bring their kids to a daycare. All of those things become much more, they just magnify the problem for many people. But I think if I can backtrack just a bit, the travel and escape of the perpetrator with someone else's car compounds a danger to the public unlike a simple robbery would.
Thank you. And I mean, I think, well, I'm gonna let Commissioner Larkin ask her question. I thinking through my response there. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Senator Limer. This is Judge Michelle Larkin, the Court of Appeals. I always. It is on.
I'm sorry.
Is it on?
I just I just wasn't getting anything through the speaker.
Okay. As a judge, I'm always thinking legislative intent when we're called upon to decide what a statute means and how it should be enforced. So that's where I'm at today. As I understand it, prior to the creation of the new offense of carjacking, someone who by force with weapon or through the causing an injury took a car from someone else could be charged with the existing offense of aggravated robbery. So we already had a crime on the books that could be used to charge someone who does what we now call a carjacking. Given that we already had a crime covering this particular offense, why was it that the legislature felt the need to create and define a new crime specific to these facts? In other words, what was the legislative intent? What were you trying to accomplish? Or what was the legislature trying to accomplish here?
Well, Judge, the changes by the legislature that basically added the words carjacking to a robbery statute, I thought needed a little bit more substance to answer your question. I believe the robbery statute was designed basically to deter someone from affecting a robbery. And I would imagine adding those words were to the same intent. I'm not sure if the legislative members who authored that simple reference into our statutes really gave it the depth of a hearing. It was a very short hearing. I remember being in the committee. I asked the very same question to the author of that. What is your legislative intent? And she could not answer that question. I, on the other hand, had a different approach that did not become passed. It was not passed in committee or on the floor of the Senate when it was in the form of an amendment. I think I think I can speak generally that the addition of carjacking was to deter. But honestly, I think I think one needs to enhance the penalty rather than just add the words to to an existing statute. And the reasons why I included an enhanced penalty is because of the added danger to the public in the escape of the crime, in the escape of the perpetrator.
Commissioner Knutson, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senator Limer, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Judge.
You answered my question. I wanted to know what happened to your bill. But we'll have a chance to take a look at that. You referenced it, and I totally understand the circumstances. So thank you.
If I might add, Mr. Zimmer, earlier this afternoon, also spoke of the bill or the amendment, well, bill and amendment that I had created, and it was rejected on the Senate floor by one vote. And so, quite honestly, I'm not, I don't think we have a mandate of thought here, but nevertheless, I will accept the consequences of a legislative proposal being defeated on the Senate floor by one vote. I think there's a philosophic difference in approach by both parties.
All right, any other questions or comments from the commission? Okay, thank you so much, Senator Limer, for joining us today. I think we'll move on to our next online testifier.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next testifier is Senator Judy Seberger.
Senator Seberger, welcome to the commission. Please start when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. I am Senator Judy Seberger, and I was, in fact, the author of the bill related to carjacking that Senator Limer was just talking about. To address one of his comments, I have a different recollection of the committee hearing that he referred to, to the extent that he asked me what my legislative intent was in bringing this bill. Number one, I don't recall that specific question. But we did have a robust hearing on this particular bill, and I was able to speak to the reasons why I authored this bill and why I thought it was appropriate to bring this bill. And quite frankly, until we did that, we didn't have a specific crime known as carjacking here in Minnesota. I thought it was important that we recognize the offense for what it is, that we call it what it is, and that is the legislative intent behind the bill. I remember Senator Limer's bill. While there were parts of it that I thought had merit, other parts of it, I did not agree with it, and his bill did not pass for a number of reasons. I also want to state that I was on the conference committee for the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee in addition to being on the committee itself. And during conference committee, this bill came up, and we were able to speak to it at length as we talked about the necessity for the bill, the intent of the bill, the need for this bill, and what we were hoping to accomplish. And quite frankly, it was to call out this act of carjacking, call it what it is, and make it a crime. I think the the bill, as it was passed, speaks for itself in terms of offense level and sentencing. And I'm pleased to be here to answer any questions you folks might have or to shed any light on any further legislative intent as the author of this bill, as you make your decisions as a commission.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of the commission? Did you raise your hand? Commissioner Larkin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Senator Seberger. And I appreciate that you wanted to call it what it is and make it a crime. But I guess, in my view, it already was a crime, and there had to be a reason why people felt it was necessary to call it what it is and to call it out. Did public opinion influence your decision? I mean, I appreciate your answer, but it doesn't seem that the bill really accomplishes much unless the penalty is different than it already was prior to the bill.
Senator Seberger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I would disagree with that. You know, if there's no crime on the books for carjacking, if it's called something else, I think, number one, what it does is it, like I said before, it calls it what it is. It defines a particular crime of carjacking. It makes that specific.
Oh, I think we left, I think we lost you there for a sec.
Okay, am I back?
Yes.
Okay. It makes carjacking specifically a crime in the state of Minnesota, which which wasn't the case beforehand. Number two, it does allow folks to track carjacking as a whole within the state, which can lead to further legislative action down the line once we have facts and data related to this offense. I'm not saying that further legislation won't happen. Maybe it will in the future. Maybe Senator Limer and I can sit down and work out another version of a bill that works for for him and for me. That's certainly a possibility in the future. But this is an important first step, I think, in defining a crime that has become a problem to sending the message that, as a legislature, we're seeing this activity. It needs to be a crime. It should be a crime. We made it a crime. And and I think that in and of itself has significance.
Commissioner Larkin.
Thank you. I just want to clarify. I mean, you do understand that the act of quote-unquote "carjacking" was a crime before. It fell under the category of aggravated robbery. So it's it's not exactly accurate to say this wasn't a crime. We just called it something else. Do you agree?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Senator Seberger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Of course, I understood it was a crime.
All right, any other comments or questions from the commission? I was just gonna add to sort of pick up on what Senator Seberger said there. I think this this connects to me back to what what I, the question I asked of Mr. Zimmer earlier. When we look at the high departure rate for aggravated robbery, we don't know what necessarily those departures were for, which type of aggravated robbery those were for. So I mean, one benefit of this being called out now, I think, is going to be that we will be able to understand what sentencing looks like for this crime on its own. And that's that's definitely gonna tell us something or give us some information to go on in the future, as Senator Seberger said. Any any other comments? All right, well, Senator Seberger, thank you so much for your testimony today. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's the list, that's the end of our signed up list, right? So I'm gonna.
We have, we have two more add-ons. So people, people who have signed up during the meeting, which people are welcome to do. And if you, if now would be a good time, you might want to give sort of the final, final notice, or we could do it after after the next witness.
No, let's let's give that. Actually, can you, do you have the info to give it? Because I am not sure what I should say.
I thought we had it in your script.
Maybe. What, yeah, but you're not here to point me, point to me. Let's see, okay. So if there's if there's anybody else online or anyone else who's who's we don't have anyone else in the room who would would potentially want to testify in person. So the only other individuals who could potentially testify today are those who are listening online. For anyone who is attending remotely, if you're interested in testifying and have not already told us that, please email your registration information to staff@sentencing.guidelines@state.mn.us or call 651-296-0144. And we will get you the link so that you can, so that you can testify today. And in the meantime, we will take the last two people who have requested to do so.
Madam Chair, the next, next person on the list is Matt Majowski. Mr. Majowski, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission members. Just so you know, I'm in my home office, which faces the front yard, and some landscaping work is getting done there. Right now, it's quiet, but things may start up at any minute. And I'm not using headphones. So I apologize for any background noise that may come through. I would like to talk about a different issue than the carjacking issue. So I hope that may be a little refreshing for you. Concerning the modifications to the Minnesota Sentencing Guidelines, the document that was provided, I'm referring to page seven of that document in the area concerning convictions from jurisdictions other than Minnesota. So I, you know, wanted to make some comment or ask a question concerning rationale for the definition of a felony in that area. I know that the definition of a felony in Minnesota changed, which causes all sorts of issues for us as practitioners of the sentencing guidelines. Oh, I apologize that I really forgot to identify myself and that I'm a probation officer at Dakota County. And my interest has always been in sentencing guidelines. However, I'm speaking for myself and not as a representative of Dakota County Community Corrections. Again, going back to that page, my question or concern is when defining an out-of-state felony conviction, the modifications refer to a sentence of 366 days or more rather than the new Minnesota definition of 365 days or more. And then in the commentary, I, it mentions a, near the bottom of page seven, the last sentence says, for example, "An assault with dangerous weapon committed in Texas that received a 364-day sentence would be given one gross misdemeanor unit." Rather than they cross, this 365-day sentence is crossed off there. I would think, you know, really what this is doing is keeping the definition of an out-of-state felony as to equivalent to the old Minnesota, out of Minnesota definition of felony. And so I think, you know, there's inconsistencies here or confusion here. And if that is done, what would then, why is there the need to change the commentary from 365 days to 364 days? So again, the confusion is 365 days for a felony in Minnesota, but it has to be 366 days for a non-Minnesota. Personally, I don't mind this sort of thing because it adds, you know, complications to the guidelines. And I And I am one who kind of enjoys those complications and figuring puzzles out. But I know this is going to cause additional confusion and problems for practitioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Majewski. I, I will confirm that your read is correct. We were intending to keep that definition of an out-of-state felony similar to the old definition of, of a felony in Minnesota. Does any member of the commission have any questions or comments they want to ask of Mr. Majewski? Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony today.
You're welcome.
All right. We can, we can go ahead with the next testifier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next testifier is Nicholas Murch. Mr. Murch, you are.
Welcome to the commission, Mr. Murch. You can go ahead when you're ready.
Hi, Nicholas Murch, probation officer with Dakota County. Speaking for myself and not for Dakota County, I did not realize my coworker, Matt, was bringing up the same issue that I was as well. But I know that I did watch the commission meeting on June 7th. And in terms of the out-of-state convictions, I know Nate used the comparison of fleeing a motor vehicle in Iowa. And he said that that would be a felony point in Minnesota if it was given a 365-day sentence. That is actually not, not the case. It would be given half a point because it's only a severity level one. My point is this, that there are going to be some cases where someone might get half a point, felony point. And as opposed to if they already have three misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor points, instead, they may get a misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor point, whereas they would have, under the old rules, would have just gotten half a point. Hopefully, that makes sense. But that's the only comment I wanted to make, that it does seem like a simple fix, but there are complications where a person could get a full misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor point as opposed to just half a point if they already have three misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor units. Thank you for letting me speak today.
All right. That's, you're, you are identifying the complexity of the guidelines with that one. Thank you. And are there any questions or comments from the commission on, for Mr. Murch? All right. Hearing none. Then do we have any other testifiers? Thank you, Mr. Murch, for, for attending today.
We seem to have lost communication with Linda. So I wonder if we could just have a brief break to call her and confirm. I'm not sure what's, what's going on, but she's.
Yep. We're just going to take a, a quick break here, just a minute or two to confirm whether or not anyone else has attempted to sign up. I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak today.
Madam Chair, I'll say this while we're waiting. It, it appears that everybody who's attending publicly is on a computer as opposed to a telephone. So if anybody is interested in testifying before the commission, if you could just raise your hand. It should be a function at the bottom of your screen where you can raise your hand. And at, at least we'd have some indication that, that you do want to testify that way. You do, we are required to get your information by, by administrative rule. We have to, we have to get your contact information and affiliation. But, but if you don't raise your hand, I think we can safely assume that you do not want to testify at this time. And Madam Chair, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hands.
Okay.
So I, I think it's fair to assume that everybody's been given full opportunity to testify.
Commissioner Larkin, did you have a procedural question about testimony or about the next steps?
Next step.
Okay. Let me just, I have words I have to say. So let me say those first, and then I will, I'll come back to you. Okay. One sec. Are we still all good?
Yeah. I, I don't know what happened with the.
Okay. All right. And that concludes the testimony of everyone who has registered to testify. If you, oh, I've already read that part. Let's see. And as nobody else has registered to testify, that concludes the business of today's public hearing. I'll just let, let me tell you what's going to happen now. The record of the public hearing will remain open for five calendar days after today through July 25th, 2023, to receive additional written comments. So if you're interested in doing that and you have not already done so, please submit any additional written comments to the commission's email address at sentencing.guidelines.state.mn.us. We will be meeting again next week on Thursday, July 27th, at 1:00 p.m. to actually take up the package of proposals that is before us. And that's when any final decisions will be made. There's no, no decisions are made, will be made today. Today is just a public hearing. Commissioner Larkin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As just described, we're on a really short time schedule here. I, at the earlier meeting advocated for a higher ranking for carjacking. And I want to ask us to revisit that possibility next week. I would normally try to do something in writing a week before the meeting, but I think, especially with the record remaining open, that's impossible. So I just wanted to give notice that I'll ask that we reconsider a higher ranking at the meeting next week. And if there's anything more you need from me to put me in compliance with our procedural goals, please let me know.
I don't think we need anything else from you. That's consistent with the type of action we could potentially take following any public hearings. So, but thank you for putting this on us. All right. Um, any other matters?
Madam Chair, I just want to say that from the staff perspective, we, we will be supplementing the materials. For example, there's been some discussion about the, the legislative history of the carjacking bill. We're, we're going to be supplementing the information you've gotten with, with transcripts of, of statements, or at least that's my intent, of the conversations that were had in, in the Senate committees on this and the conference committee. So, so there will be some additional information. You won't necessarily get it all today. So just watch your emails as, as it'll be trickling in, and we'll be posting that all on the public website as well.
Tomorrow?
So I, I intend to send out an email today. I'm not going to make any promises on exactly when things will come out.
Commissioner Larkin?
And are we back at the DOC for our meeting next week?
We are. We're back.
Thank you.
All right. No corrections. All right. Any other business or comments that we need to address before we close the hearing today? Hearing none. This, I am closing the public hearing for today. As I mentioned earlier, the public record remains open for five days. We will be back in a week. Thank you very much.